We have an agenda, and we follow that agenda. So Chairman, we call to order the meeting that will be the start for today.
Sir?
And the flag is back here. We could pledge the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Would our secretary call the roll, please? Secretaries on Zoom.
About our chairman, our chairman can call it.
Here.
Here.
Brian Johnson?
Here.
Richard Moran?
Here.
And Robert Dootson?
There. I did not hear Mr. Johnson. Is he on?
Yeah, he's on Zoom.
Do we have an acknowledgement for Mr. Johnson, please?
Here.
Thank you. Please record this public meeting reflect, I'm here with my colleague Brian Doig Meyer, and I presume maybe he's here taking minutes.
Cheers.
A little bit of background, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you. We met here August 6th to organize, introduce the special BCA members to matters that are before you. This is an administrative appeal of three building permits. Those permit numbers are referenced in the body of the agenda for this meeting. Since August 6th, there has been review and work by the attorneys involved in this matter. And in fact, several teleconferences have been held, meetings of the attorneys of the parties affected and involved, which was held or were held, maybe they were plural. And the result of that is the agenda for today, so that this proceeding before you can be organized and understandable as best we can make it. Motions are legal arguments made by the lawyers for their parties based upon their filings with the entity. The proceedings, though, will start with what lawyers call voir dire. Voir dire is an examination by the parties of the members of the special BCA for purposes of identifying any issues with qualifications of you members under the provisions of Indiana Code 36-7-4-900 series. The parties have agreed that the amount of time per each of you will be five minutes for each of them to examine you as to those qualifications under the law. So we will proceed today in this order with your permission. One, the attorneys will introduce themselves and their clients, the parties involved and the parties interested. Two, upon the completion of that brief introduction, they will commence the undertaking of the voir dire that I just described to you. And upon completion of the voir dire, we will proceed into the arguments, the oral arguments on the motions. We've provided you copies of those pleadings, so you're going to hear the attorneys do their advocacy work based upon those filings. Are there any questions by our special BCA members on that protocol and that information I have provided you? None here. Okay, thank you. If there are, please stop the proceedings so we can answer your questions or address your concerns. This is not an attorney process. The special BCA is the quasi judicial body responsible for decision making here. We're just here to facilitate and aid you in that process. Counsel, is there anything I missed?
No.
Okay, thank you. Then counsel, in the appropriate order, please proceed.
Thank you. And good morning to all. My name is Kurt Ernst, law firm Brage Nelson James. I along with Patricia Sharkey, who is here on Zoom with Environmental Law Council, we are here on advocacy of Long Beach Community Alliance, a 501(c)(3) corporation that was formed back in 2012 with the express purpose of protecting homeowners and property owners in Long Beach, pertaining to issues along the beach, along also other areas, and the enforcement of good government and town ordinances.
Good morning, my name is John. I am an attorney for the file of purchase of permit recipients and three parties and the client of the building permits that are part of this action today. Those parties are John Morbey Nattiforn, who are the owners of the property at 2822 Lake Shore Drive, Tim and Anna Gordon, who is the owners of the property at 2826 Lake Shore Drive, and Christopher Lyons, who is the owner of the property at 2900 Lake Shore Drive.
What about Ms. Sharkey, anything?
I don't believe so. I think I'll be doing most of these today.
Do you want her recognized on the record?
Please.
Attorney Patricia Sharkey is co-counsel to the LBCA with Attorney Ernst.
Correct.
And I believe she's participating on Zoom?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have an acknowledgement of that, Ms. Sharkey?
Yes, good morning. Thank you very much. Mr. Ernst will be representing Long Beach Community Alliance today. I may chime in if I see something that I really think needs to be added, but I think that's a little complicated being on Zoom, so we prefer to have Mr. Ernst do most of the speaking on behalf of Long Beach Community Alliance. But I do want to thank all of the members of the special BCA for being here this morning and for undertaking these hearings. It's been a long time that Long Beach Community Alliance has waited for these hearings to be held, and we're very happy to see this moving forward, and it couldn't happen without your civic participation, so thank you.
Counsel, could you also give us the confirmation of your parents' eligibility in this proceeding?
Yes. There was, I am an attorney licensed in Illinois, and I have a temporary admission from the Indiana Supreme Court to participate in this proceeding.
And we have that temporary admission instrument or documentation from the Indiana Supreme Court in our record?
Yes, and there has been a recent reinstatement of that that I will be sending you in the course of this. I apologize, Mr. Austin, I intended to get that to you yesterday.
We just wanted to make certain that our record was good and clean, because we had talked about that. So as soon as you can provide that, we will incorporate it into the record of this proceeding and today's meeting especially.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
This is the time the voir dire begins. However, before we start that, I would direct my inquiry to Mr. Wojcik concerning any voir dire he wants to take of me related to these proceedings as per our attorney conference discussions. So whatever record you want to make, please do so at this time.
Yesterday, there was a question that I had recorded to Mr. Austin, that what the Long Beach Community Alliance participated in the appeals, the Indiana court of appeals. Mr. Austin belongs to the Indiana Municipal Lawyers Association, which filed an amicus writ, which is just brief in support of another party. I inquired with Mr. Austin whether he participated or discussed with the Indiana Municipal Lawyers Association anything about that agreement. He assured me that they had not, but I just wanted to make that matter on the record. I feel very comfortable in what he said, and he's on his hands and shoulders.
Let me add to that record. I am a practicing attorney in the state of Indiana. I have been so since October 9th, 1981. My attorney number is 3895-45. I practice in Crown Point, Indiana, in the law firm of Ossing High Grisitis. I am a member of the Indiana Municipal Lawyers Association, commonly known as IMLA, which is a bar associate, or a bar group affiliated with AIM, Achieving Indiana Municipalities. I had no idea they filed an amicus, much less talked about it. Had no participatory involvement in any way, shape, or form. I attend the annual CLEs, basically. Have there any questions, counsel, in addition to any of that?
On that issue or in general?
In that issue and then in general.
On that issue, no questions from my LBCA.
And counsel? Thank you. Okay. In general?
And as Mr. Wojcik indicated, obviously there were questionnaires sent out, and I thought they were pretty thorough, and I thank all of you for answering those promptly, because obviously it's very important. The only thing I guess I would ask is just to make sure that there are no perceived conflicts as it pertains to the lawyers involved in this matter. Whether by myself or the law firm of Bragey Nelson James, we have several lawyers, Craig Bragey, William Nelson Jr., William James, Christopher Willoughby, Elizabeth Flynn, Grace Doddy, and Charles Waterston, including myself. I just want to make sure none of the members have had any dealings or have actually represented in the past, so I just want to make sure that's up to cover, or also the same thing with Mr. Wojcik.
Counsel?
I have no conflict, and so I think the only question for voir dire is if I can ask one question?
Just one.
The word now, good.
Yes, sir.
We proceed.
We may proceed. Are there any questions for the special BCA members about the attorney report they just had?
No.
Let us proceed into voir dire then, please. The attorneys have been providing the questionnaires that we circulated and utilized in interviewing you. You were providing them again, so if you had them to refresh yourself. Do you have any questions about those documents before we turn this over to the attorney?
Okay.
We have our panel here, counsel. I'm going to teach. And again, I want to make sure that I'm clear, just I'm thinking, does any member of the special BCA recognize any conflict or past dealings with my law firm, Patricia Sharkey?
No.
Or the individual member, the personal or otherwise social setting?
No.
Very good.
The best answer right now.
Very good, very good. That's all I have, thank you.
I think this is a, I need to understand, basically like, why you want, you know, I wasn't a special BCA, or why you're using my five, because my five is a special BCA.
Let's try to give a brand new shirt. Actually, I wasn't, it's worth it, personally, that you could do with on this, give you a shot, retire, go home. Why not?
I just tried to, you know, I volunteered for a couple of events, and I just wanted to give you a moment, and then you can.
My perspective, it's civic duty, but just trying to make a contribution to the community that I love. That's it.
Thank you.
Brian, did you get the question?
I did. Please repeat it.
The question was, why did you want to, and I'm paraphrasing here, why did you want to participate in this special BCA? Is that a fair restatement? What do you remember?
Yeah, similar to Mr. Cusack, just civic duty. I guess we all have our calling. Felt it was an opportunity to, you know, hear out an interesting situation that is going on within the village.
That's it.
It's it on voir dire?
Yes, sir.
No comments, motions, objections?
Questionnaire I think was very, very, very thorough.
All right. More efficient than I thought. Thank you. So our agenda describes, the next item, as pending motions. This is the meat of the day, so counsel, you each have your time limitations. Please proceed.
These are for opening?
These are for openings.
Very good.
In anticipation of your motion, argument.
Very opening statement, very good opening statement. Okay. To the members that are actually present, I handed out first document, this is the opening statement. This is our attempt at a low-tech version of PowerPoint. It seems more reliable, and something you can read along with very easily. Obviously, you know, the big issue here today is, what is a permit appeal? Obviously, the town Long Beach ordinance provides for the appeal of any zoning decision of a town official, the board is owning the appeal. The decision of Long Beach Building Commission or Commissioner, initial building permit is one of those such decisions, which is what's before you today. Before a building permit can be issued, the building commission must determine that construction will comply with all applicable town ordinances. This appeal is a check in our system of government checks and balances to ensure that building permit decisions are consistent with town ordinances. What is the Long Beach Community Alliance? As I indicated in my introductions, it is a not-for-profit 501(c)(3) community organization composed of more than 400 Long Beach residents and homeowners. The LBCA was formed in 2012 to protect interests of all Long Beach residents and homeowners in protecting and using the Lake Michigan shore adjacent to the sound. LBCA's mission is also to act as a civic watchdog, to ensure good government in the town of Long Beach. We believe what we're going to be hearing throughout this matter today and in a later time is relatively simple and straightforward. It involves two basic questions, and the answers to those questions are contained in a handful of building permit application documents that were presented to the building commission in December of 2015. Obviously, the first is, do the permit applicants, represented by Mr. Wojcik, contain the information necessary to show that the permit applicants own the properties on which they propose to construct their seawalls? Secondly, do the permit applications contain the information necessary to show that the construction of these seawalls will be in compliance with certain Long Beach ordinances? The necessary information to answer these questions is either in the permit application submitted in 2015, or they are not. The LBCA contends that some of the necessary information was either not provided, or what was provided was either invalid or insufficient. Then we get to the question, do the permit applications contain the information necessary to show that permits applicants each own the property in which they propose to construct their seawalls? Then we get into the issue of the northern boundary, the properties adjacent along Lake Michigan is by law a case called the Gunderson, you may have heard of it, or the ordinary high watermark, or HWM. This is the boundary between state and private land. The state of Indiana owns the shore length of the ordinary high watermark and holds that shore in trust with public use and enjoyment. The LBCA, throughout these proceedings, will contend that the permit applications in these cases did not show the location of the ordinary high watermark, and thus it is impossible to tell whether construction of these proposed seawalls would take place on the permit applicant's private property or state-owned property. Obviously, the town cannot, in our opinion, issue a permit to build on someone else's property, vis a vis the state of Indiana. The town also has no authority, we contend, to issue permits to build anything on state-owned property, owing the state of Indiana to do so. And of course, secondly, do the permit applications contain the information necessary to show compliance with all Long Beach ordinances? LBCA will be contending that the permit applications did not contain the information necessary to allow the building commissioner to determine compliance with the following Long Beach ordinances. Section 154.112, permit required for earth changes and to alter topography, Chapter 155, pertaining to flood hazard areas, and Chapter 156, construction, stormwater runoff control. Now, there'll be some motions that you're going to hear today about the applicants that file, Mr. Wojcik's clients, are motions to be dismissed. Before we can get to these simple questions, we have to deal with these issues. Now, what is a motion to dismiss? Obviously, you have your counsel that are very able, and of course, probably consult a few advocates of today's proceedings, but a motion to dismiss is in essence a pure question of law. The moving party, the permit applicants, again, represented by Mr. Wojcik, must show that the law requires the case be dismissed, that moving party has burdened proof on a pure legal pressure. We do not. All facts stated by the not-moving party, us, the Long Beach Community Alliance, are deemed to be true for purposes of a motion to dismiss. If granted, the motion to dismiss will end the matter; if denied, the case will go forward to an evidentiary hearing. Now, the first of these two motions is an issue of standing, and again, we're going to be starting to talk about some legal issues. Again, we're going to try to make it in English as best lawyers can, but obviously, again, that's why you have your able attorneys that can hopefully try to even further make this understandable. The first one's an issue that's called standing. The permit applicants, again, represented by Mr. Wojcik, argued that the LBCA is not allowed to bring these appeals because it does not have standing, meaning that the law doesn't allow an organization like us, the LBCA, to bring these appeals. We will show you that the Long Beach ordinances in this town expressly allow any person, including any organization or corporation, who claims to be adversely affected by a decision of a town official to appeal that decision to the BCA. In this case, a decision by a building commissioner to issue a building permit, which we believe approaches on state land and/or is not fully compliant with Long Beach town ordinances. The second one, and this is the really tricky one, we're starting to get into Latin terms now, race judicata. The permit applicants, again, represented by Mr. Wojcik, argue that in prior variance proceedings, the BCA, a prior BCA, already adjudged, being determined that the issues that we are raising today are different, decision cannot be reached from these permits. In other words, they're claiming that this matter was already decided. A race judicata motion to dismiss requires a showing that a prior decision involved the same issues and the same parties. We will show that the prior variances involve a single, different town ordinance and involve different parties. A little bit of history in this case, in 2016, we even had a BCA originally set up in this matter for these appeals. The applicants chose instead to sue the LBCA for filing these appeals, and chose to sue the town as well and its officials to stop the BCA from even hearing the appeals. The permit applicants lost in Superior Court Number 2, then appealed to the appellate court, where they also lost, and then to the Supreme Court, where the court declined to hear their cases. Lawsuit Number 2, in 2017, the town selected a special BCA, which held an evidentiary hearing and ruled in favor of the LBCA on these issues, or the LBCA on these issues, and revoked the building permits. However, the permit applicants appealed that decision to Superior Court, but before the Superior Court could decide that case, the applicants claimed that one of the special BCA members had a bias in favor of the LBCA, and the court were mandated to take back for a new hearing by a new special BCA, which is you folks today. Now, the issue is going to be having the permit applicants have the information necessary, which we believe is a big question. Permit applicants have always had the option of relinquishing these permits and filing a new permit application containing all the required information. They will need to provide an delineation of the ordinary high watermark, northern boundary of their properties, and locate their seawalls on their own property, and design their seawalls to meet the topographic, flood hazard, and stormwater runoff requirements of Long Beach ordinances. And then why are these permit appeals reported to LBCA? Because we believe, as an organization, allowing private seawalls to be built length of the ordinary high watermark on state-owned land along the shores of Lake Michigan would privatize public land and exclude other Long Beach residents from that portion of the public trust shore, allowing structures to be built landward of the ordinary high watermark that do not comply with the town's topographic, flood hazard, and stormwater runoff ordinances will result in damage to the Lake Michigan shore, which is a great value to all Long Beach residents. Issuing permits that don't comply with town ordinances, not good government, our position is that these permits should be denied, and we'll be submitting arguments accordingly again after the date, and hopefully after the motion to dismiss are heard. We thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Was this case involved, involved being able to protect your property, and your This case started in 2015, in a monthly hearing of marriage requests, marriage requests of my client over five months. Some meetings, they met their meetings twice a month. They were very contentious here. There was a lot of opposition to my clients of taking the building permits to build their seawalls. What our clients were trying to do was to protect their property like any other property owner would do. They applied for building permits, they went, they met with the building commissioner, the building commissioner said, this is what you need to do in order to get a building permit to build your seawall to protect your property. And the parties that were involved in seeking these building permits were very experienced people. They were not somebody that was going to try to pull a fast one on the town of Long Beach. The builder was town informant of Brooklyn Development, the town has been building homes in Long Beach for over 20 years. At the public hearings that began in August of 2015, we presented evidence through experts such as Steve Thane, the surveyor, who provided respect and informed the survey from the town of Long Beach's art for property line fly. We brought in Oscar Loveless, who was an engineer from White and Engineering, that designed the plan to build seawalls that would not have adverse effect on the joint property ownership. We had Mr. Booth Bazuello, a well-recognized prosecutor, to testify, to provide evidence as far as any negative value that these proposed seawalls would have on the adjacent property. Unlike, yeah, I didn't practice in law for four years. Unlike any public hearing on building permit, this was more like a trial. We presented evidence, the other sides presented their side, they cross-examined our witnesses, the Sharkey, and I believe Mr. Ernst was there. And so there was a whole airing of the issues and what we needed to do in order to obtain building permits. And this whole hearing continued over a period, like I said, of four months. Ultimately, the Board of Zoning Appeals, in December 8th, 2015, gave our clients the variances that they saw. And we proceeded to build seawalls as permitted. We relied on some, like all of us, I think, rely on government. If it costs to do something, most citizens will do it, and they check these boxes and do this, we did it. What was different in this case was, after we obtained the building permits, we lost them. And we had the ready proceeded, spent $60,000 plus to buy this shield steep pile. send $60,000 plus to buy this shield steep pile sheet piling and the beginning construction of our seawalls. What's important here, too, when Mr. Ernst talks about the Long Beach Community Alliance... The Long Beach Community Alliance is an organization that the law refers to as a community landowner organization. And you'll hear later on why that's important as far as a community landowner organization. Because under the law, Bill here, community landowner organization has a right different than any of you who have an individual property owner. I don't believe that any community would want to have been put through the process that we were put through to obtain any building permits, protect our property, and to proceed to building seawalls to protect our property, and then have the right to withhold from the community. And so, we're going to get into the legal part of this town, but I want you to keep that in mind. I think the two things that are very important is, you have an investment of your property. You have a right to protect your property as long as you don't, you know, do anything, build anything. And you have a right to rely on your local government. If they tell you to do X, Y, and Z, and you do X, Y, and Z, then you should be able to do X, Y, and Z and give a request and then come back and place the bill so you can do one, two, three. Thank you. I'm gonna hear the motions. The Long Beach Community Alliance, as I stated, is a community landowner organization. It does not own any property in the town of Long Beach. It does not pay taxes. And as such, is a community landowner organization. And what the law says, if you look carefully and it refers to what I'm agreeing...
I'm sorry, Mr. Wojcicki. Could you help about which motion are you arguing?
Are you arguing the motion to dismiss the wagging standing? Okay, thank you. So, you're on reference. So, if you refer to that... As you'll see on page four of our brief, a community landowner organization does not have any potential because of what the law holds is that a person must have a legal interest that will begin large or disminuted as a result of an appeal. And if you don't have that, then you're not standing. And that's our position in this case and one part of it, is that the Long Beach Community Alliance does not have standing. It doesn't own any property in Long Beach. It doesn't pay taxes. If they were to challenge something that was respect to your property, you would want to raise that complaint. The other part is that, I want to take me through the history of what occurred. As I said earlier, there was five months of hearings on these building permits, beginning in August of 2015, going through December 8th, 2015, when the Board of Zoning Appeals made a decision to grant our clients a variance. And then, just see in the materials that we submitted, there's three variance applications and permit verifications of that. The Board of Zoning Appeals found that these, the issuance of this variance was an absolute necessity to protect our client's property. Because what was happening was, beginning in October 2014, some of you may remember, and continuing through this stage, there was highway activity. And the highway activity was causing significant erosion. And there was a danger that the setup they came to be exposed and contents could end up in Lake Michigan. And so, from a public health standpoint, he wanted to protect the community and he wanted to protect his property. And so, we sought these variances to build a seawall behind or adjacent to the existing Army Corps of Engineers seawall. Now, you may or may not be aware that there's an Army Corps of Engineers seawall that runs along Lake Michigan. And if you look at the pictures that I presented here earlier, if you look at number two and number three... If you look at number three, you'll see that along by that's like a boardwalk. And that boardwalk, to the right of that boardwalk is Mr. Osborne's property. If you continue down to the lake, you'll see a partially completed seawall. That was the seawall that Mr. Osborne started constructing with his contractors before the building permits were revoked in Eastside. To the immediate left of that seawall that's taken a higher length is the town of Long Beach property. And we did not know it. These pictures were taken last Saturday. We, when these hearings were in 2015, we were unaware that the town, the Army, let's say, Army People of Engineers seawall, that's taller seawall. We were unaware that that existed there because it was understand, like so many things were understand, that now, you know, become exposed as a result of erosion. So, that popped up only probably in the last year when we could see that seawall. And that seawall runs in front of Mr. Osborne's property. And so, what we wanted to do was to support a great additional protection by building a new seawall. And that new seawall, which got the higher exposed sheet metal piling, was going to be, I'm gonna say, within a foot, foot and a half of the existing Army Corps of Engineers seawall. So, we had these public hearings over for five months. And ultimately, the Board of Zoning Appeals issued a decision saying that it is an absolute necessity that we be allowed to build these seawalls to protect our property. And in your materials you're given and promises are not going to bore you of the findings of fact of the Board of Zoning Appeals. They prepared the findings of fact that you've met all the conditions required to obtain a variance to build your seawall. What, you'll see that there's handwriting on those findings of fact. That handwriting came from the attorney for the Board of Zoning Appeals, who at that time was truly powerful. And there were some conditions that they could ask our clients to consider. And those two conditions were, make the top of the seawall that's gonna have cement capings. And they said, make the top of the seawall painted sand color. So, if somebody's walking along the beach and they see that seawall moves, it's got like a sore thumb, like all of you right now, they'll blend in with the sand. If you're looking down from Lake Shore Drive to see why you won't see it. Our clients said, "Fine, we'll create it then." Second thing they said is, "We want you to plant dune grass north of the seawall." So, if somebody's walking down Lake Shore Drive, down Lake Shore Drive, down Lake Drive, and they look over, they may not see that ugly seawall. So, he said, "Okay, we'll plant the dune grass. We'll do that." They didn't say any, we weren't asked to do anything else about stormwater runoff, drainage, the three issues that Mr. Ernst mentioned. No town official told us you gotta do these three things. We relied upon the building commissioner. The building commissioner said, "If you get all you have to do, you get the permit, to get the variance. You gotta get the variance." So, we got a variance on December 8th, 2015. December 14th... So, here in December 14th through December 15th, we applied for the building permit to build the seawall. That's an important date, December 14th. And I asked you, when you look for use of materials, you won't look at that date because the passion exhibit act of this motion, but in the pedagogy that we've been provided, the passion exhibit five, our other motions, is this with standing. There's an email from a lady by the name of Carlo Pardo. Carlo Pardo was a member of the Long Beach Community Alliance. And what Carlo Pardo says is, "We should consider filing an appeal following a certain statute except the 36th chapter of 100 series." The day, December 14th, she already knew that they were gonna raise these issues through the problem that they gave the building commissioner for the town of Long Beach to check all the boxes and comply with the ordinances. She knew that within six days after we'd backed our building permit, or made our, six days after we backed our variance, but they never raised any of these issues in the five-month proceeding that we're getting up to December every decision. It kind of held those kind of the most effective. Then all of a sudden, now Carlo Pardo says, "Hey, we're gonna file a administrative appeal on three of these things. And the other thing, we're gonna file the judicial appeal on the issue of where the northern property, the northern boundary of the property is." That's what they have in criminal bodies. December 30th comes, we get our building permit. We have the sheet piling order. We're starting to count sheet piling, as you can see from the picture, and we start to build our seawalls. A few weeks, two days later, there's a change in the office holders in County Department. So, a few weeks later, our building permits get yanked. They get pulled. So, now we have to stop building our seawalls. I'm gonna say I can't be presented precisely, but within a few weeks of the, at that time when our building permits are pulled, the building commissioner, that time Aaron Tomchak, reversed his decision. He said, "You can go back out there and build." It's called a certificate eminent peril. He said, "That property, you know, holy cow, other damage coming. That property with the way that it's in peril, you guys better get back out there and start building." So, we started building. Should go back to work. A few days later, our building permits get yanked again. And we had to stop building. And that's where we, that's how we end up here. You know, we're doing everything that we could do, according to what we were told we had to do, and then, you know, we moved our right to build. So, getting back to beyond the historical standard, yeah, on June 29th, we revoked our building permit. For 2016. Then we got a hearing for the all of the BCA, and that got overturned and got abandoned by Mr. Ernst. What's important, when you look at the decisions of the BCA, is they make specific findings of fact. And that's what they're required by law. It isn't just some generalized opportunity that says, you know, this is what you already did to a variance. What they have to do. And I'm gonna just read them from here. They threw them some in the bag. The development standard variance and not even injuries the public health, safety, and general welfare because of a fall we've had. Property is coming unperforated. The property is subject to damage or subsequent damage to the highway deck. The existing seawall on the property is more than fifty years old and potentially inadequate to protect the property. The damage caused by the October 2014 storm demonstrated that it happened was due to these walls, to the extent any wall does at all. The October 2014 storm placed a subject system serving the property in peril. If nothing is done to protect the subject system of the property, the subject system will likely be damaged, resulting in the content being discharged onto the beach in Lake Michigan. If that happened, if the subject was discharged in Lake Michigan and dangers or injures the public health, safety, and welfare of reach of the property commissioner by three lines, that the system could have burned in time. Proposed there, proposed seawall will be 143.9 feet or 144 feet from Lake Shore Drive and need a variance at that time to 17.8 feet. Town informant, builders, that injures public health, safety, and welfare, Steve Thake, the surveyor, that believe that injures public health, safety, and welfare after levels of linear where there's experience in constructing seawalls, leave it without an insurance for chasing, moving the food all the way that would have had the impact on property rights. The proposal, an important one because this came up there, God. Proposed seawall petition that should be constructed to be substantially similar to numerous other seawalls constructed on nearby properties in Long Beach, Indiana, as far as all referred to as seawalls. So, we're no different. Everybody has, actually, there's a lot of seawalls in Long Beach. And so, it's gonna be consistent with that. And construction of the proposed seawall was a separate, you're going to destroy the stuff, kind of ends in Lake Michigan. Mr. Bazuello testified that it had adverse effects on the adjacent property. The next-door neighbor, the Osborne, Mr. Luigiani, agreed with our variance request. Guy that most directly impacted your next-door neighbor, hey, I don't judge these guys in the variance, long, you know, variance, long builders, seawalls, proceeds. Proposed seawall be closer to Lake Shore Drive than the existing. And then, number three in the findings is that it said, "If strictly applied..." Look at this, we're good. "The strict application of a Long Beach zoning subdivision order will be resulted in practical difficulties to use of the property." That's why you seek there. And what's important, you know, on this And what's important, you know, on this is, one of the BCA members, Mr. Allen Shell, some of you may know Allen from the United States. Allen lived in Long Beach his entire life. Allen's life in his late eighties. Allen was on the BCA for-
I guess I'm in a point of objection to this point, I think we're getting far in field of the issue of standing, so I think that's what the motion is, I don't think this is anything to do with standing.
Let me wrap it up. Wrap it up, please. So, we, we were given a variance, and it was determined the absolute necessity that it was determined that we didn't have the requirement, otherwise it would have been listed. With respect to the issue of standing, our position that they are, the LBCA, New Zealand Order of Organization, they do not tax standing, they don't own property, they don't pay taxes, they never can allege a specific injury as revolved from the condition of variance. They say our members will, our members will suffer harm in this area. But they don't say, they don't say which member, they just say, it's our organization. And they must have a specific injury, in order to link it. Mr. Wojcicki? I'm okay. So, one minute, wrap up.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, the, okay, oh, under, they allege standing on the second one, 54, 2024, however, they did not allege specific harm. And so therefore, there's a reason they allege standing, we discuss that. So if you can, any land on the basis of the manual organization that brought up in Indiana can't 715104, we believe they can add, um, parties who, where they have standing, they don't particular injury, to proceed, um, or request that an administrative review be dismissed or legacy. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
May I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Wojcicki, I just wanna make sure I'm reading correctly your briefs and hearing your argument on this particular motion accurately. You do agree that an administrative appeal of a building permit is different than a petition for judicial review of a variance filing? That they are separate and distinct acts?
I agree, yes, that they are distinct acts, that you have to look in the locality and circumstances of the case.
So that was the basis of error of your argument, how your presentation was?
Right, I want, I wanted to state it on that show.
I wanna make sure the special BCA members are aware we're here on the administrative review of a permit application, and not a easy variance. Put that aside. Thank you.
All these pictures in the same place?
Yeah, all, all pictures are at the same, what if they were taken, um, right outside of the Osborne House, 2822 Lake Shore Drive? The picture, picture number one was taken two years ago. That was from two years ago, that happened to you. Um, pictures number two and three were taken, um, last Saturday. Um, it showed, you know, the guy on the corner, the senior gentleman down there, where he was, he was jumping on the, um, the seawall, like, the guy on the side of the surge, you know, about the tax, property in Long Beach, you have to live buildings, and they tried to take a picture when he did, when he jumped off.
This is the property to the left, the left of the, you know, Long Beach, this is Long Beach, but the-
Yeah, yeah, that's the town of Long Beach property, and what you see there, I'm sure many of you are aware, there's been a significant, um, erosion that property has highlighted.
Mr. Wojcicki, I would also presume you want these three pictures, this group exhibit, if you will, uh, make part of the record.
Right, they have, you can say, you have to, we can supplement the record, that you have to, these pictures include as part of the record.
So that is your request today?
I would, of course, interpose an objection, our position is the record is sealed in this matter, that no new evidentiary or factual matter can be used.
Party offering, however, has the right to request and may do so. Is that what you are doing today?
Yes.
Anything else?
No, sir, just on the line by objection.
And the, uh, record, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We, I, I, I will, here's, uh, prior by any, entry statement, you said, we then proceeded to build the seawalls. How much of the seawalls in the building have they got?
Um, it depends on the property, the property of 2822, Lake Shore Drive is owned by the Osborne, is probably about a third, don't they? Um, more than, there was no construction yet there. Uh, lions, there was some sheet filing, I believe, five years ago, dug in, and they started building it then, and it, um, it's, um, right.
Can't put their government, everybody can reduce themselves before they speak.
Okay, thank you, I was, we're in. Gentlemen, a motion has been made in, in the form of, uh, Mr. Wojcicki's request that the record be supplemented by these three pictures. Objection that is made, a recommendation is that you accept the motion and add some conditions to the record.
Yes, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see the picture properly.
Please restate that, there's a terrible-
A motion made regarding the acceptance of three pictures.
So you can see them. So what they did is they've introduced three photographs of the Osborne property. There's been a motion and a second to accept these photographs and to include them in the record. So, do you vote to approve and to accept the photographs, or do you not want to include them in the record?
Accept.
Okay.
Final, final comment on this particular matter, Mr. Wojcicki, if you would, uh, date and identify location on these documents for, for the, uh, record submission, so that these are understandable in the context of the record, I would request that be done on behalf of the BCA.
Mr. Mr. Austin, it's Pat Sharkey, I wonder if I could ask a question? For clarification here?
Go ahead, Pat.
This is a motion to, this, what we're talking about right now is a motion to dismiss. As we are going to explain and have explained, evidence is irrelevant in motions to dismiss. This is not an evidentiary matter. There should be no new evidence coming in when we are talking about standing. That's this issue, the, the question of what is, what that property looked like in 2015, when the building commission issued these permits, is the only factual question that should be in front of this SBA, SBZA. When we get to an evidentiary hearing, it is improper to be introducing evidence on a motion to dismiss, because a motion to dismiss by law is a pure question of law. We are not, we did not come prepared to provide you with counter photographs. I, I am sitting here and of course cannot see those photographs, but we did not come prepared, and I think it is entirely improper for this to have been, these photos to been allowed. It may be that they're inconsequential, in which case, I think what needs to be understood is that they're demonstrative of the, and they, they only show the property now. Um, they do not show the property at the time the building permits were, in our view, improperly issued. I don't know that they even are relevant to that, but we're getting things kind of out of order here by allowing evidence in when what is before the BCA today, the sole matters before this group, is the questions of pure law about whether Long Beach Community Alliance has standing to bring these, its, to file these permits, and the second question is whether this issue, uh, that, the issues we are raising about flood hazard and topographical, uh, problems and design generally of the seawall and of, that, that's all in the, all the evidence is in the application submitted to the building commission. That is not, whatever it is, you have to assume, under a motion to dismiss, the facts are as Long Beach Community Alliance said, not as Mr. Wojcicki says. So, I, I think, uh, I'm sure that the building, you know, non-lawyer, uh, members of this board, I completely understand, you may not understand the legalese here and the legal constraints, but it is improper to be putting in any evidence at this point, and I would like our objection on the record to that, because we're going to be arguing to you later when we get to the evidentiary stage, that the only things you can look at as a matter of law here is what was in the record before the building commission in order to determine if the building commission made the right decision. If they didn't make the right decision, then that decision needs to be remade under, you know, with new evidence maybe, if they wanna file a new application. But what, the question of whether the, the building commissioner made the right decision and applied the right laws depends on what was in front of the building commissioner at the time, not something that subsequently comes into the record. So I, I, I really think, um, Mr. Austin, that you, that the, uh, I would appreciate these remarks being in the record on this.
Every word, and if I may also, technically, I mean, when the Sharkey says, true, when you're looking at a motion dismissed, all facts are assumed true towards the non-moving, and there's no fact, you have to look at the pleadings themselves, that's the pure definition of a motion dismissed, which evidence generally is not admissible. Furthermore, to kind of compound that, this is a motion for standing, those photographs have nothing to do with the issue of standing, so therefore that I believe they're not relevant to the motion before the special BCA today, and as such, they probably are not proper for an introduction to the record as to this motion at this time.
As, uh, the attorneys discussed, prior to this proceeding commencing today, this is a record case, and that is my position about this, it's my advice to the BCA, and as a record case, you've chosen the method of filing, pleadings, dispositive motion, you've chosen that, nobody else here did. So we're taking what you have filed and submitted as part of the record, arguments are being made on, on the record, and a supplemental request, a supplement to the record request was made in fashion by Mr. Wojcicki, and, uh, these folks can have that information as part of the record, in my opinion. And I think they've already taken the action, they've all nodded yes, all five, so the, uh, three pictures are group exhibit, if you will, or however you end up marking it, so we have it clean in the record as a supplement to the record, is, uh, granted based upon their action.
Yes.
Mr. Austin, if I might, the consequence of, just so that everyone understands, the consequence of taking the position that you're taking now is, is preliminarily outside of the evidentiary context that we're going to all be-
You've already argued it.
Is that we are going to have-
You've already argued this.
Building commission, if I might just finish this one point, the building commission is being told by virtue of that action, that somebody doesn't need to come in with everything before, before the building commission, because they can come back in, in front of the BCA later. And that's, that's, that's a problem for the building commission going forward and doing its work properly in the future.
Mr. Ernst, I am going to further the, I'm sure he spoke, and I'll be sound decision.
Any questions, folks?
Another question. I, maybe I misunderstood, my, I think Wojcicki made two, you know, motions. One to reinstate, one to, uh, as to stand, and one to reinstate the permit. Did I misunderstand?
There are two motions pending.
One motion or two?
There are two motions pending, he'll argue another motion when Mr. Ernst finishes arguing the response. They both get a turn.
The photographs are not for the standing motion, but for the other motion?
No, actually, they are, they are, but the two motions are all part of the same record. The proceedings here are the administrative appeal from three building permit applications, which ref, is referenced on your caption. So it'll ultimately be in that entire record when it's completed, and these proceedings are completed.
Again, our, our business is to decide, one, if they're standing, and two, whether to, three, they should be heard. Those two are lying-
Those are two basic tenets of the motions, yes.
No, that, excuse me, that, that is incorrect. Mister, we have two motions, we are, Long Beach Community Alliance should be allowed to respond to the first one, which is standing, before, there should be any discussion, frankly. Um, so you have not heard the response to that yet. Then we're going to go to the race Judicata motion, which is not about reinstating the permits. It's, it's a motion of, that we are all going to explain to you in our arguments. So I, uh, I, I really think if you would give Long Beach Community Alliance the courtesy of responding to Mr. Wojcicki, before we go into all this discussion, you will, we would be better off.
Excuse me, of course you're gonna get a response, time, Mr. Ernst is sitting here in the on deck circle waiting to do that. We've just seen the special BCA make a ruling on supplementing the record consisting of three pictures, which you've objected to and is noted on the record. It's Mr. Ernst's turn on the response to the property owner's motion to dismiss for lack of standing.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Uh, and again, Kirk Ernst, uh, speaking on behalf of Long Beach Community Alliance. Uh, I'm gonna, there are a few things I wanna make sure I address, uh, in response to Mr. Wojcicki, now I'll get my formal presentation again, this is also part of my low tech, uh, PowerPoint presentation, which you have before you, except for one individual on, uh, on Zoom. A few things I wanna clarify. One, uh, Mr. Wojcicki indicated that I was present during these matters in 2015, I was not. I was not brought in until his clients decided to sue the Long Beach Community Alliance and the town of Long Beach and a few other entities in Superior Report Number Two, only then was I brought in to these matters. Also, again, as we said more specifically in our low tech PowerPoint presentation, it's a little bit misleading when they say, well, we, we got everything we needed, we told them we needed to get. They specifically said on the record, and they petitioned on the record, for one ordinance, variance, for review ordinance. That's all they petitioned for, that's all they provided notice to the community for people that were coming to respond, and that's all they said in open discussion with the BCA. Don't worry, this is all we're seeking, is this one view ordinance variance. That's all they were seeking. And I agree with Mr. Austin's, uh, recitation as well, that we're talking about separate matters, the, what happened in 2015 before the BCA there, we're not talking about, we're talking about what happened with the building commission and the issuance of the building permit, and whether or not it properly was issued, and whether it properly dealt with all Long Beach ordinances that pertain to the building of things like seawalls. Uh, they also talked about the fact and standing that, well, this is some organization and they're, they're not homeowners, we talked about, I think we all know this to be true. And we talked about in the opening statement is that this is an organization of over 400 Long Beach residents and homeowners. These are the people that comprise this organization, they pay taxes, they own homes, they have an interest in the property, and more importantly- an interest in the property, and more importantly, the use and enjoyment of that property, this most recently was confirmed by the Indiana Supreme Court and the Gunderson decision to say, that's public property. People in the area have a right to use it, and they have a vested interest and right to use that. And more importantly also, again, Mr. Wojcicki did hit this point as well, again, when we submitted our, or we objected to the building permits and started this process, we didn't go right to the BCA, we were sued in state court. They tried to leapfrog and bypass that offer, off that procedure. We went to state court, we had a hearing, took several months, they went up to the appellate court, went up to the supreme court, who eventually said, hey, this matter should have gone to the BCA to begin with. And let's just not forget, they talked about how the, you know, the town issue, the town was actually sitting at my counsel table during, throughout that entire litigation, they were opposing the issuance of the building permits, the town of Long Beach and their attorney. And when you get the issue, and again, Doc indicated further about there's another motion could be hearing, race judicata, ironically, in this particular matter, their assertion of lack of standing is race judicata, meaning it has already been decided. In state court, Judge Stahlbrink, and we've submitted this in our materials, specifically read, found that the LBCA had a vested right to seek to redress on seeking and to represent the issues it was representing. He indicated they did have standing, and no other appellate court has refuted that claim. It's already been decided. They're trying to have another bite at the apple. There've been lots of lawsuits, actually, I mean, this thing, it seemed like there'd been more activity outside of trying to go with the BCA than has been inside the BCA, within Superior Court Number Three, within circuit court, Superior Court Number Two, the appellate court, Indiana Supreme Court, ULS District Court in South Bend. This is just a litigious matter. They finally have come home to roots, and the Supreme Court did two things, one, they ruled that the beach is for the use and benefit of the, all the citizens of the state of Indiana, including the residents of Long Beach. And they basically said, you shouldn't have tried to leapfrog the BCA, you should have come here first, which they did, when they originally asked for just one variance, and then went to the building commission and were somehow able to secure a building permit that went far abroad of that variance that was granted to them, and included, did not include, rather, provisions for the rest of the Long Beach ordinances and codes pertaining seawalls, like anyone else, you build a house, when you get a building permit, it better comply with all the bells and whistles, or you're going to be in trouble. There was a situation in Michigan City years ago, a gentleman built an entire tower, he was told by the town he could build it, later on, he was challenging court, that judge ruled, the town shouldn't have given you the permit, get it turfed down. So as far as reliance on government, you got to rely on the law, if you don't, there are consequences, and that's forever. But getting back to the actual issue of standing, it's a legal doctrine, which is simple, standing is simply the right to bring a claim against another party. The reason this motion is easy is because we believe the law is clear, the courts have already found, the LBCA has a vested right to file these appeals, again, Judge Stahlbrink ruled that in his ruling in Superior Court Number Two, when they leapfrogged the BCA, and no appellate court or the Supreme Court of Indiana have refuted that. Race judicata, it's already been decided. The town board, this is expressly saying, any person claiming to be adversely affected can appeal a building permit decision to the BCA. And the Indiana Supreme Court, the appellate court also found, or at least did not refute Judge Stahlbrink's ruling that the LBCA has a vested right to bring these appeals. Again, they raised the same argument for my applicants in their first lawsuit, trying to stop these appeals back in 2016, they were unsuccessful, and they should be unsuccessful here, again, no two bites at the apple. And also, before I lose my track of thought, they also talked about, they convoluted the idea, well, there was this imminent threat, that's why we had to build these, and I think that's where those photographs go to. The irony about that is, when we were in Superior Court Number Two, they talked about all the people they called as witnesses at the BCA, what he didn't tell you is, when we were in front of Judge Stahlbrink, we called the, we called health department, because they were claiming our subject citizens are an imminent peril, and I have the head person from the health department who's in charge of subjects saying, I was just out there yesterday, and then there is no imminent peril, I watched, we as the health department would do something because we're watching the situation carefully. That was not one or two to the hearings, where the health department even said, there's no imminent threat, because if there was, they were going to take, take action, like cat bumping home, never happened. So they can call their own builder, or they can hire their own expert, saying, oh, there's an imminent threat, the entity that's supposedly policing this for our government and was aware of this issue in Long Beach, inspected it on more than one occasion, no threat. But here's what the law says on standing, Long Beach has an ordinance, 151.04, the any decision of the building commission concerning the issuance of an improvement location permit may be appealed to the town board of zoning field when the decision in question involves the requirement of the zoning code by any person claiming to be adversely affected by such decision. And then a note that improvement location permit is the term used under Indiana code for building permit. Now you may say, well, LBCA is a person, well, there's a definition provided in the ordinance, 154.202, corporation, limited liability company, firm, partnership, association, organization, or any other group acting as a unit as a well as a natural person. Under the own definitions of the town of Long Beach ordinances, the LBCA is a person, it is granted standing. And ironically, the cases that were cited by the permites in their briefs that you'll read, cited cases involving standing in court, well, this is not court, this is quasi judicial, but it's not court, they're a different situation. The town of Long Beach itself, by its own ordinances, granted standing to people like the LBCA. And again, report Superior Court Number Two in front of Judge Stahlbrink also agreed with that, it's already been decided. Then how we are adversely affected were an organization that represents Long Beach residents and homeowners who use the Lake Michigan beach and shore adjacent to the town of Long Beach. The value of those LBCA members' homes in this beach community is directly affected if lakefront homeowners are allowed to construct in a manner that privatizes public beaches and/or erodes of public beach or town-owned spots that provide public access to the beach. LBCA members are also the beneficiaries of the public trust, in which the Lake Michigan shore is held by the state of Indiana and thus have a direct property interest in the conservation of that shore for public use. Again, that's the Gunderson decision. Permit applicants are applying the wrong standard. Again, this is an administrative appeal, it's not a judicial proceeding, which is what the case law they cite, says there's no standing, however, this is an administrative proceeding. Report Superior Court Number Two, and this ruling said that we had standing, the town ordinances on the books today say we have standing. Because courts have not, a person having a divvy own real estate property that would be harmed and order bill appeal to the decision of a local government to local board of zoning appeals. The case, again, cited by the permits, permites pertaining to standing, bringing lawsuits in court, this is not a court. And again, we have checks and balances, that's why we're here, that's what this case is about. And again, organizations like LBCA have to have an ability to bring suits like this matter, protect the benefits of the public, and to make sure that all ordinances are And again, going back to Superior Court case, Judge Stahlbrink specifically said we have a vested right to appeal these permits, it's already been decided. Said a clear vested right to appeal any decision of the building commission concerning the issuance of an improvement location permit when the decision in question involved a permit issued concretely with another existing provision of the zoning code. And again, you can read the rest, we attached that to our motion. And again, the appellate courts upheld that, and the Supreme Court did not do anything And also, let's also talk about, just bringing this in the race judicata argument, talking about same claims and same parties. In the litigation Superior Two, a forum that they picked, not us, the same parties as they are today, Gunderson, Osborne, and the other homeowners, LBCA, same parties of interest in both lawsuits. Matter was decided, we're here today with the same parties and the same issue, ironically, their argument in late race judicata, their argument, at least as this issue, it applies against them, so they've had, they can't have a second bite at the apple. So we believe the law is clear that this motion must be denied. We have standing, as conferred on us by the only applicable ordinances, which are the town of Long Beach ordinances. We are homeowners, that I think goes without question. The question of any harm, obviously, we have a right to protect the public, as well as the homeowners and the LBCA and the homeowners of Long Beach in general, to the use of the property and to make sure the property adjacent to these seawalls is not eroded. In essence, to hold people accountable that if they're going to build something, they comply with the law. And again, the court has already ruled on this, with the same parties and the same issue. So no matter how you slice it, we contend that we have standing, it's already been determined, it's on the books, the Long Beach ordinances, which are the only ordinances applicable for issues of standing, we live as motion should be denied.
Thank you. Sounds so very great, you used all of your time on this.
One of the issues that Mr. Ernst has in mind, with respect to this, is the issue of waiver, and waivers never are reissued by the appellate court. If you don't exercise a right, there should be a timeline that you waive that right. The judicial part of, of, you know, you proceed, it sets specific timelines, thirty days. If you don't get a time deadline to appeal, it could be evergreen. So if you imagine this in one of your own cases, you got a barrier five years ago, and now, for one reason or another, maybe you had an altercation or something with somebody, and now they're going to go back and they're going to start looking to see whether it's all necessary for vesting your, your building permit five years ago. That's why the judicial part of this is important, is if you can waive legal rights, if you don't exercise those legal rights within a definite time period, and that's what our argument is that they waive their rights. They've never proved specialized damages, they say we have members, well, we wish members, one of the members of the LBCA is nearly across the street from one of my acquaintance, and acquaintance I hadn't seen in probably ten years, I ran into him the other day, he says, you know what, I sure hope Ozzy hits protective property, Ozzy and John Ozzy. So that's why I would see these cases that we cite, the people that are within a hundred, hundred fifty feet, those are the people that are important, they're the most, they're the most likely to be in the area, and I take a preparation for this. You know, Mr. Ernst is a very well-obsessed criminal defense lawyer, and one of the unknown principles that, you know, Mr. Ernst relies upon is the opportunity to confront this client's accusers. The same thing here, if you were a property owner and somebody's damaged by what you're doing on your property, I would want to know, I wouldn't want to listen to people along the beach community alliance that would want to be a liberty property, homeowners association, whatever, and there has to be specialized damage, and there's, there's no damage here. They haven't said, they just said, we don't know where the property line was. And then to think of all of us who've been involved in this aggregate result with the Gunderson decision, there's been uncertainty, it's hard to work property starts and work property again. What my line of this attempt to do is adult seawalls and practice seawalls, or improve the seawalls, similar to what happened, I think, earlier this year when there were seawall creatures.
Mr. Wojcicki, excuse me, you're straying from standing.
Okay.
We're actually talking about variance in your-
I'm sorry, and I, I don't, I just, I just want to move on.
Gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Ernst? For, for Mr. Wojcicki in his closing.
Richard, at the time this occurred, in 2015, 2016, were the ordinances that you have cited and granted them, or since then?
I believe they are the same ordinances, but I don't think these ordinances have been changed in quite some time, I know there's been discussions about that, I believe they've been on the books for quite some time, Dr.
And that can be confirmed for you, Doctor, in the clerk's office. Anyone else? All right, before we move on to the second motion, may I recommend that this motion be taken under advisement and that you ask the attorneys to provide a form of order as to what their position is on their motions, so that we can see what they are requesting exactly, what their prayer for relief is, is what it would entail, and the order form they would propose that you consider. Would you all agree with that action step?
Yes.
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 We got a yes from Brian, too.
All right, so the motion just argued will be taken under advisement, and the attorneys will be requested to provide a form order, we'll talk about timelines at the back end of this. All right, anybody need a break, want to take a break, we have another argument. Let's flip the record, we're going to take five minutes, ten minutes.
There's a big lake.
We'll take a ten-minute break, and we'll come back.
Yeah, the restaurant is a lot of time, and almost like two, it's for a reason, true.
I think there's a reason for that, you found one, I think.
I found one.
Oh, no, 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 yeah.
Yeah, you gotta go left, and then we'll-
On our side, what the gym is, if one is open.
Oh, okay.
Just a little single.
Yeah.
All argument on the motion to dismiss for lack of standing, we have another motion, Mr. Wojcicki.
Pointing at, the second motion, the basis of this motion dismiss is the legal theory of what's called race judicata. And what race judicata basically says is, same party, same issue, it's a rating, a permit, or issue, or a result. Our position, that we, that you first earlier, is, in Indiana, appeals of or zoning appeals decisions, are you, in case law, is, is both a judicial review process. The judicial review process states, you must file a petition to appeal within thirty days of or zoning decision, which was- of board zoning and such decision, which was not the case, was not the situation in this case. And to deliberate on the hearing on this motion, I asked you to look at exhibit four of our motion to dismiss. Because in exhibit four of our motion to dismiss due ratio de patto, there's an email that I referred to earlier that had to do with, where Carl Hart was a member of the LBCA that filed a petition for judicial review on the issue where the north boundary line is and why it was under spend, other issues you may file on administrative appeal. That never happened, and time went by. And our argument is that under the law is a case that we cite in that, which was Al Graysol, I believe it was called, versus the board zoning, the city of Al Graysol versus Saint. Once you don't get the deadline of healing time rates or judicial review, the case becomes determinative. That's the first point. You can't be able to determine. The second point is, once a building under the Long Beach ordinance, when we just hit the correct ordinance, the town of Long Beach ordinance, 154.156, we state, after approval, building permits shall issue. Doesn't say building permits, may issue, it says shall. So in this case, Mr. Tom Jack issued the building permits and he had an allegation issue of building permitting. Again, our position on why this is ratio de patto is because they waived their right to appeal. They knew, they, they knew before the final decision, the final hearing on December 8th of 2015 that they may allege certain deficiencies in the building officials filed. The fact that the BCA is ready to determine that our client's property will not be adversely affected, that supports our position in this case, when the issues therein have been determined. The initial grant or denial of a barrier's request was in the discretion, discretion of the BCA. So the zoning board does not have any authority to revoke a barrier once it's issued. And remember, when we talk about this issue of ratio de patto, whether the issues have been determined, the findings of fact on the granting of the barriers to our clients were written by the board of zoning appeals. They were not written by us to permit these, the applicants for the building permit. They were written by the board of zoning appeals and their attorney. And the two conditions, they established those conditions, and we agreed to comply with those conditions. And so there's nothing really to argue about there. Five years later, from, you know, our granting of, or obtaining of the barrier's request and the issuance of the building permits. So therefore, we would ask that this board dismiss the officials' appeal based on the theory of ratio de patto.
Mr. Austin, if I may, if we could, just to avoid the confusion, if we maybe hold off on questions on both sides of the rest of the issue, that would, maybe some of these questions might be answered by the reply.
I'm fine with that. Thank you. Make it more efficient.
Thank you. Again, gentlemen, last time referencing my, uh, my, uh, low-tech PowerPoint representation. Ratio de patto, that's Latin, which confuses lots of people and quite frankly, it's a legal bit of confusion for both lawyers. But thankfully, we've had some guiding principles in that. First of all, it's the law. The legal doctrine bars the litigation of a claim that has already been decided between the same parties. That's the key issue. The doctrine of ratio de patto bars the litigation of a claim after a final judgment has been rendered in a prior action log of the same claim between the same parties or their previous. Now, in order for the permit applicants represented by Mr. Wojciech to succeed with this motion, they would have to show that all of the parties involved in the permit appeals filed by Long Beach Realize and the permit applicant's various proceedings are the same, and all of the claims involved in LBCA's permit appeals and permit application, various proceedings are the same. We believe this claim, looking at the record and of course, looking at the briefs filed in this matter and supporting documents, neither the claims nor the parties here are the same, so ratio de patto should be denied. When you look at comparing the two parties, they're not identical. Again, we have to have an apples and apples comparison. It cannot be apples and oranges or just some other type of fruit. It has to be apples and apples. The prior variant proceeding, you had the three owners. LBCA was not a party. As soon as some people showed up and asked a few questions, unless we also not be forgetting the fact, in 2015, before that BCA, they only petitioned and only sought one variance. And they represented to that BCA, one variance, that's all we're looking for, which is all that could be granted. And as Mr. Austin has already said today in some of his comments, we're, we're talking about two different things. And what we're talking about here really today is the issuance of building permits, which is a separate issue, which when they were issued, we timely objected because at that point, it was clear what was being granted, what was being sought. Up to that point, we didn't know, had they complied with everything else in the building ordinances? To accept Mr. Wojciech's arguments, he's going to say, well, BCA said we can do it. They gave us a bunch of ordinances, our parents didn't only ask for one. So apparently that means they don't have to comply with all the building codes, whether it be the state of Indiana, the town of Long Beach, you know, what have you. Apparently it's just okay. There is a mechanism for checks and balances on the issuance of government building permits. And that's why we're here. It's got nothing to do with the 2015 BCA, because again, we weren't parties to that matter. And again, we get back to this simple point. The one time where the parties have been the same and the issues have been the same have been when they filed a lawsuit in the Court of Superior, Court Number Two, and Judge Stahlbrink, hearing those same arguments you've heard today, ruled it was not ratio de patto. And the LBCA had a right to proceed, and they did timely object, and they did properly follow the rules in seeking the redress before this special BCA that we're now before you today doing. So ironically, when you're talking of ratio de patto, it actually applies against the permities, because a judge sitting in, is sitting in an evidentiary hearing, hearing all matters from the same parties and all the same issues, came to the conclusion, we Variants applications only requested, again, one ordinance variance, 154.060, the view ordinance. That's the only thing they told that BCA they were seeking. The community members were present, that variance hearing expressed concern about the walls regarding the beach. Applicants' orders told the BCA, the public had that variance hearing. The ordinance for which we're asking a variance is the view protection ordinance. It's not the beach protection ordinance or the sand erosion ordinance. It's designed to protect, and I'll direct you to our post-hearing statement, is designed to protect the views from adjacent properties of the lake, nothing else. That's the statements of permities on lawyers at the BCA in 2015. Don't worry, we're not dealing with any of those issues. Maybe they knew something we didn't at the time. But again, when you're talking about the issuance of a building permit, you can only know until the permit's issued whether something's objectionable. BCA, they assured them, hey, we're not even going to worry about this issue. We're not even going to deal with those issues. Only when they chose to deal with those issues, submit their building permit, could we then have an accurate opportunity to object, and at that point, we became parties to that matter. We weren't before that. They can't have it both ways. These permanent applicants made one representation, seeking a variance, and now they're saying we're okay to seek anything we want, and it doesn't matter if we don't comply with the law or not. We all know that's not how things work. They're not supposed to work. When we go before a building commission, we better make sure we comply with all the ordinances, or guess what? We're not going to get the permit. And if someone does give that permit, it should be, have the right to be challenged in checks and balances. Ironically, in Superior Court Number Two, the town of Long Beach stood with us against that issuance of that building permit. They were with us in that litigation. And again, judicial stoppage basically protects the essential integrity of judicial process by preventing a party and counsel from claiming fast and loose. Again, don't worry, we're just seeking one ordinance. But then we get a building permit that gives us everything we want, but no one can say anything about it. Often people apply for building permit first, and the building commission makes a determination. The application shows compliance with all the zoning requirements, who set maybe A, B, or C. Then the permit applicant can see the variance to the BCA for A, B, and C. If the BCA grants the variance to ordinance A, B, or C, the building commission can then quickly issue the permit because it already cleared the project as to compliance with all the other requirements. Here, applicants didn't converse. They went to the BCA first, and then they went to the building commission. And they don't, they shouldn't get a pass for trying to circumvent the issue, which is probably why, when we filed our petitions as to these building permits, they didn't let it go to the BCA. They wanted to leapfrog and try to get around it, going to state court, and then appellate court, then the Supreme Court, who then told them they should have been to the BCA to begin with. Yeah, that's why they sued us in a couple of different other forums as well. Again, Judge Stahlbrink rejected the exact argument that Mr. Wojciech has made here today and ruled with the same parties and the same facts and the same people, ratio de patto did not apply. LBCA is not barred from seeking an appeal of the issuance of these building permits. So therefore, again, their own arguments, we believe, act against them, and as the law is clear, because only time we've had the same parties and the same issues has been in Superior Court Number Two or today. Anything before that, they were not apples and apples. And as such, we believe this motion should be denied, and this matter should go into an evidentiary hearing to hear the whole matter for full determination of what should or should not have happened.
Reply.
And, uh, so, say, you rely on what your document will do. And especially in this case, this was, number two, this, number one, none of my clients played jazz, you know, see, stand, and try to, like, do it and run. They spent a significant amount of money with professionals to better represent us and to address the issues that the town of Long Beach building commissioner, that they had to deal with. These other sections of the ordinance, which we didn't issue, which people have filed, the issue with the building commissioner, presumably, let's say, maybe, you know, were satisfied, because he did not bring those issues to us. He didn't say, hey, look, here's three more agents, you guys have to deal with it. You know, so as an applicant, it's not our job to do the job of the building commissioner. He works for the town, he's appointed by the town, he has the responsibility. And so we relied upon him and did what he said we would do in order to get the building permit and substitute that building permit position. And so we did everything with the, with the accident of us. We didn't say, hey, we're, we're going to ignore that, let's, you know, skip pride. With respect to applying to the building, we had to prevent. Why would we have to go back to the building commissioner? The building commissioner gave us a building permit, and we got the variance, and we started building, acquiring the building permit. So the issues have been decided, and now we're back trying to justify something that we were never told we had, or we had to satisfy. Because we relied on the building commissioner, the building commissioner said, this is the only issue you've got to worry about. You have a view there, the, the view ordinance. So we don't want to be worried. And there's a legal, another legal term I hate to throw in, but it's, you know, it's a stop. We relied on him, your homelessness, and now you cannot proceed forward, and that first variant. So we would ask you to grant our motion to dismiss with ratio de patto.
Members, any questions? Inquiries? Mr. Jensen? Any questions, comments, inquiries?
None.
None in the room? Okay. Uh, thank you, gentlemen. The, um, previous motion ended with the recommendation that the motion made and the arguments presented be taken under advisement and for the attorneys to prepare and submit proposed orders on each of them. Uh, I would recommend that that occur on the second motion as it did with the first. Obviously, you have more work to do, guys. What type of timeframe is appropriate and reasonable there, given the Labor Day holidays coming up and et cetera?
Friday, or how about the 18th? But that's okay. Should we, should we, Brad?
Uh, Pat, does that work as well, do you think?
I need one moment to check my calendar.
Thank you.
Well, Pat.
Yes, that, that will work.
Okay, we're good with that.
So nine eighteen?
Nine eighteen.
Very good.
Is anybody moving? I'm not going to be here that evening.
But that's, that's.
It's just, yeah.
It's not going to be.
Um, okay, so nine eighteen is the timeline for filing two form orders.
Yes.
Um, we need to talk about now, next steps in this proceeding and calendaring accordingly. What amount of time do we need for next actions? And let's assume that in the context of, uh, a little, it does not dismiss this case.
Assuming an evidentiary hearing.
Yes.
Yes.
We get an evidentiary hearing on all issues.
We're going to set a hearing, but we're having an evidentiary, have it on the books for a deadline.
Right.
There's still additional issues that need to be resolved.
Yeah, that's a good point. We still have outstanding discovery items, correct?
Any motion?
Do we not address most of that today with the membership or dire?
I believe we have.
I, I don't think most of it.
And again, you know, obviously, our position is, it means a closed record, so there's no discovery to be had.
Unless it's a supplement to the record made in conformance of the statute. Subject to objection.
Of course.
Gentlemen, I think you guys had tendered discovery early on.
Correct.
In this binder to practically everyone. So presuming that the voir dire today eliminates the need for discovery on the board, I think there's still outstanding discovery issues with Kurt and his comments.
Correct.
All right, so let's, let's deal with that in the same way we dealt with setting today. Let's have the attorneys confirm.
Yes.
And go, go over the outstanding, the rest of the package, if you will.
We'll do.
And if you can make it go away, then we don't need to worry about it.
If, if not, we'll, of course, advise you, we can set a hearing accordingly.
There are motions still pending, actually, not motions, uh, discovery requests, discovery submissions, that we did not attend to today, because these are dispositive motions that you heard.
Right.
Uh, depending upon disposition, you wouldn't need to hear other matters. Depending upon disposition, you wouldn't need to hear other matters. So we're taking this in those bite steps sequentially. So what we're talking about today is that the attorneys will convene telephonically or otherwise in two weeks.
Do you want to make it by the eighteenth again?
Oh, we do.
We get everything by the eighteenth?
We get everything.
There you go. We submit those by then, and we'll advise you as well whether we still have issues that need to be addressed.
Yes.
Very good.
Okay, so that brings us to setting the next hearing.
Probably, I would suggest, assuming there's something we would still have to address, we'd have to leave time of which to do that, because that would have to be a little fun beforehand. Probably, again, I'm looking at my count, the first week or two in October, I have some trials set in US courts, and my first two weeks of October are pretty shot. Maybe something first part of November.
We can, November? That's why I don't.
Take a look.
Are you talking for evidentiary proceedings?
And of course, we can always adjust that if there are other issues.
Or, I mean, if something comes up with discovery, maybe that's something we can address in a shorter session prior to that.
But we'll know September eighteenth.
Correct.
Or immediately thereafter, if there are remaining issues of discovery. And if not, then there's an identification of issues for the next hearing.
We're looking basically two months out.
I mean, like, November tenth and the twelfth, I know I'm free all day.
All days, I don't.
Tuesdays and Thursdays.
You have any idea how long you will all need?
That's a loaded question.
We moved things along pretty well. You know, you just never know, because obviously, this is where the rubber heat hits the road at that point. There might be quite a bit more to that. And I'd say just block out the better part of the day, just to save, since it's a record case.
I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead. We've got, if we, if we, I assume we're going to have a ruling then on the, these dispositive motions before the date we're talking about. And what I'd like to do is suggest that we have at least two weeks before we go to hearing so that we know we're going to hearing, the lawyers that have to prepare for that. We know that we're going to hearing and we can prepare for it. In terms of the amount of time that we need, as we've told you in our opening statements, we think this is a pretty simple case. But what has to be decided at the outset, if we're going forward, is the question of whether or not it is limited to the record that was before the board of zone, before the building commission at the time they issued the permits. And so I think that we have to have, we will have to have that procedural motion discussed. And of course, if there is, if there's a discovery issue, then we can't go to the evidentiary hearing until we've resolved the discovery issue. So we may need, Dave, what I'm saying is, we may need two dates. And I think we need the first one to be at least two weeks after the decision by the special BCA on the motions that we've argued today.
Upon the submission of the form orders and status of outstanding matters, I would suggest that all attorneys, us included, convene telephonically. And then we can, here we have left, and what that means in terms of scheduling for submission, the formal submission, and time. Then I can come back to the members and get their calendar availability for doing so.
Sound good?
Does that make sense? Do you want to get, like, trial briefs or anything? We'll talk about, Ryan made a good point. Trial briefs sometimes help. We'll talk about that when we have the attorney conference post-filing submission.
About two weeks after the submission date for our proposed filing?
Yeah, within two weeks, I would say. Some kind of teleconference, so we can get calendars and log. Do you all have any, any questions about any of that? Here's what we will be doing for you as your attorneys. We will await receipt from them, parties and their attorneys, September eighteenth or immediately thereafter of their proposed form order. We will circulate that immediately with you, and we will convene a Zoom or personal special meeting, so we can review that with you and make our recommendations that you can consider for the disposition rulings.
So December, you convene November?
No, no.
September.
September eighteen. They're going to file, I'm sorry. That makes sense. When our next meeting is. When we need you to give us dates.
Right.
It'll be after September eighteen.
But everyone is at that meeting in November now?
In November, November's the hearing.
Yeah, but do we want to get that set? We haven't picked the date yet, right? I know that you guys have thrown some dates out. I'm assuming if you're talking full day, start at nine AM and.
Yeah. Let's pick the date then. We can pick that date today. But see, I need a date with them, with the members, so they can rule on the two motions you argued today.
Right.
Which drives what happens, if anything, pending matters.
So chronologically, should we, you guys submit this up to us in September, September eighteenth? We'll get that to the special BCA members.
Right.
Get a meeting set up with them, so an order can be issued. Once the order is issued, we'll get that to you guys.
Okay.
And then depending upon what happens, obviously, if it's dismissed, it's dismissed, and if it's not, then we can hopefully set sort of the standards and the parameters of how it's going to move forward. There's going to be trial brief deadlines, anything like that.
Not like a pre-trial motion, but pre-trial conference before we actually set.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Folks, any questions about any of that? Well, here's what, here's what, we can do that, we're going to in writing. Within the next couple of days, we're going to circulate an order out of this proceeding today. So you'll see what happened, who was here, what was argued, and the timelines, take it under advisement, the motions, and when we can expect to hear from the attorneys with their filings. That will be your map for the next couple of weeks. And then after that, when we receive this documentation, these pleadings, we'll be in touch with you to coordinate your availability and schedules for next meetings. Okay?
Should we say in that November hearing?
Yeah, let's set the November hearing.
Okay.
Because what they proposed was the tenth or the twelfth, is that what you said worked?
Yeah.
Is that work for you, John?
Yeah.
Those are mornings, Tuesday, Thursday?
Eleven, twelve, and eleven.
Ten.
Eleven, ten, and eleven, twelve. Do you all check your calendars now on the November dates for hearing?
Pat, while they're doing that, how do November tenth and twelfth look for you?
Both of those would be fine with me. Thank you.
That's good, was fine.
Everybody else?
Tenth or twelfth?
Right.
This will not take three days off.
They might be rethinking their membership status if it's going to take three. So which one do you want?
I don't care. Let's do it. We can get it done in 2020. I prefer it to twelve.
Twelve?
Twelve.
A Thursday?
Twelve.
Everybody can take Friday off.
That's a Thursday, right?
Yeah, yeah. Second Thursday.
All right, Pat, we have a couple of housekeeping items for the BCA.
Plan on the full bag.
Very quickly. After the last meeting, you all signed the resolution that you adopted, Resolution 2020-01. Well, I learned the next day from clerk treasured to puny act that I mislabeled the item, and the date was changed on it. I didn't change your signature page, they were in two pages, but it is now 2020-006 per Mr. Puny Act. So I want to note that on this record and for counsel. Number one, number two, an assignment has been made to this body by the BCA of an appeal called Tom King, the permit appeal process also in progress, or it started. We got a package in our office about a week or 10 days ago, right?
Yeah, probably.
Thereabouts. We need to go through it, but when we next meet, special meeting of this body, we will make an introductory report to you about that matter, where it stands, and what needs to be done, if anything. I'm not going to assume anything at this point until we carefully review the record and see what status that matter is in. It's an administrative appeal, it's kind of like this as I understand it, and will have similar characteristics in processes. So Long Beach is making waves here in how things get done in administrative appeals, all good, all good. So anyway, are there any questions from you to us? All good?
All good.
Well, I can tell you the lawyers did a really good job today of time management. We were told first that this was going to take four hours. They got it done a lot less than that, so we can expect that from these gentlemen and practitioners going forward. If we're done, I would ask.
Is our motion to return?
Exactly.
Thank you very much.